Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for October 22. Would you please stand and join us in pledging allegiance to our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Irwin.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fox.
Here.
Mayor Bill Delapena.
Present. Thank you. All right. Item number four, requests for any continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. If there are no objections, we could possibly move item 10A prior to the public hearings. And that is a report on the process of our Thousand Oaks sister city relation. And that will be presented by the committee. All right. We will now begin the special presentations portion of our meeting, and I will move over there to the podium. Well, this is a very special evening because very few people in this town get to turn 100 years old. And we have a very, very special guest tonight. I would like to invite Helen Adeline Hillison Olson to the podium. And joining her are her son-in-law Chuck Cohen and her daughter Eloise Cohen. Welcome. And as I already said, Helen has a very special birthday coming up on October 29th. She turns 100 years old, or should I say young? I would like to read the proclamation to honor Helen. And this is a proclamation in honor of Helen Adeline Hillison Olson Day, whereas Helen celebrates her 100th birthday on October 29th. And whereas Helen was born on the family farm in Lee, Illinois, she graduated with a teaching credential from Waldorf College in Iowa, where she met her future husband Raymond Olson, to whom she was married 69 years before his passing on October 21st, 2006. And whereas Helen taught rural school in Willow Creek Township before marrying Ray on June 26th, 1937, becoming a partner in a Lutheran parish life and raising a family. Ray was ordained into the Lutheran ministry in 1939, and Helen played an active role, traveling widely with her husband for the Lutheran World Federation and World Council of Churches. And whereas in 1963, they moved to Thousand Oaks, where Ray served as president of California Lutheran University, and Helen as first lady, hosting hundreds of campus events with a gracious and welcoming style. And whereas Helen initiated and was the first president of the Women's League at then California Lutheran College, was on the founding board of the CLC Conejo Symphony League, and was active in auxiliaries at the To Convalarium, La Serena Retirement Community, and a founding member of the Conejo Historical Society and Alliance for the Arts. And whereas Helen's contribution to CLU during her eight years as first lady, and after focused on the Women's League and CLU Guild, as well as support of art and music programs, and whereas Helen has remained active in the community and has continued to bring joy and delight to the lives of her family and friends, and frankly, the entire community for generations. Therefore, I, the mayor of Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 29th, 2013 Helen Adeline Hillison Olson Day, and offer heartfelt best wishes on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Congratulations. You know, it's moments like this one when you have someone here who's lived and basically helped Thousand Oaks be the city that it is today, where we actually would like to have someone like Dennis Gillette here with the historical knowledge. And it is so ironic, perhaps, that while I'm presenting you with this, he's off on his way to Oregon, I think en route as we speak, and we wish him good luck. Thank you. And speaking of CLU, tonight we have with us none other than Dr. Chris Kimball, California Lutheran University President, and I invite you to the podium. Welcome. In 1959, California Lutheran University decided that visual and performing arts were vital to their curriculum. CLU became a champion and supporter for the arts throughout the region, becoming a resource for artistic and creative endeavors. CLU has been instrumental in combining the efforts of the college and the surrounding community with arts education, arts leaders, and also operates as an arts hub for the region. CLU will be hosting their annual All About Arts Week from November 2nd to November 10th. And it will feature an impressive array of cultural events that will be offered on campus, including music concerts, theater performances, art exhibitions, renowned guest lectures and artists in residence, and international film screenings. The city council would like to declare November 2nd through 10th as CLU All About the Arts Week. And we encourage residents to attend these wonderful arts events. And I'm sure you have additional information, Chris, about that before I present you with this commendation or proclamation. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Bill Delapena. Thank you to the city council. It's, as you said, ironic and appropriate tonight that the university and Helen Olson received proclamations because Helen and Raymond Olson and the extended family did so much to tie the university and the community together around the arts. The University, California Lutheran University, would not be what it is without this wonderful city. And one of the things that makes the city so great is its commitment to the arts. And we hope that the university is an asset in that work as well. The week coming up in early November features a number of events, as the mayor said. I particularly want to invite people to the opening of As You Like It, the student play from Shakespeare, who's director. Dr. Michael Arndt is here and might wave a hand. Thank you, Michael. We're also very proud of the beginning of the week on Saturday, I believe it's the 2nd, the Graduate School of Education sponsoring a symposium around arts and education, and how important art is to educating our young people. And then on November 7th, thanks to Linda Fulford, our associate vice president, we are holding a first symposium around arts and culture, the intent of which is to help promote and advocate and be a resource for arts organizations throughout the reason, region, in a way that hope, we hope will lift visibility for all of us. And we would love again to have as many people as possible from the community come. The important thing to understand is it's not just arts serving our students, that's important and crucial, but also providing professional quality arts programming for the wider community. And again, I will note my colleagues here from the Kingsman Shakespeare Festival each summer that offers professional Shakespeare performances on our campus for the community. So these are things that we offer year-round and invite people to come to us year-round, but particularly in the first week in November. So thank you.
Thank you. And here's a proclamation that announces that we recognize this and celebrate California Lutheran University's All About the Arts Week, November 2nd through the 10th. Here you go. Congratulations. And before I forget, it's actually Washington. And I think I said Oregon. I just needed to correct myself. That is where former Mayor Dennis Gillette is headed. All right. We now move to public comments.
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public carrying items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. 10 people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards. Speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker is David Ayers, followed by Georgian Nordblom, or George Nordblom, and Audrey Phaloga.
Good evening. My name is David Ayers, Mayor Delapena, City Council. I live in Newbury Park in the Casa Cano section, and that is an unincorporated section of the county. We've had a problem over the last number of years, and it's a flooding problem. I gave you a packet on each of your places up there that has an article from the paper talking about it. I've talked to Jay Spurgeon about it, talked to Cliff Finley about it, to Mike DeHidien about it, and another one of the engineers. And they're telling me that they think there is a solution. But they're telling me that they don't have any money for it for about three years. The people on Frankie Drive have had their houses flooded. The article that's in the packet I gave to you was written, and it talks about it. And it's still on the Ventura County Star website. And if you go to the Ventura County Star website and look at Frankie Drive flooding, there's a video there also of a house where the water is just coming right, right through. And they're trying to get it out around the house through the side. So they did put a berm up on the south side of Old Conejo Road. And the problem is, when the businesses on the north side were engineered, they weren't engineered, the old days, they weren't engineered properly. The houses were built in 64. Those businesses up there weren't built in the 80s. And further east toward Wendy Drive, they're connected, all those businesses going up are connected to the storm drain in the road, and they go out to Wendy Drive. Further west toward Pepper Tree Park, they're connected to the storm drain that goes down Ranaro Road. But there's a section at the crest of the hill, the Newbury Business Center, and the Shell Center, Dry Shell Center, that were never connected. So when it has these heavy rains, in the old days, the water just drained into the hill. But then when we put, there's 100 businesses in the Cano Business Center, 100 businesses. And it's all concrete, it's all asphalt, it's all roofs. And when it rains, a torrent of water comes down Jenny Drive. And I've talked, I'm the chairman of the MAT Committee in Casa Cano. And they tell me that if they have their car parked at the curb during those heavy rains in 2012, water came up into the car, and it was halfway up on the lawn toward the house. Frankie Drive, they put sandbags behind fence, behind their house, but it didn't, it didn't stop the water. There's so much water coming, it just brushed the sandbags aside. So where those people's houses stop is where the city property begins. So all the property up where the businesses are, then you have the road, then you have a little down dip, and then it goes right, the water just comes right on down the hill, across the road, down the dip, and right past their fences and onto their property, and through their houses and down the road. So this packet has a lot of information. I talked to several different agencies to try to figure out. I've talked to the county, I've talked to the city.
Okay, Mr. Ayers, your time is up. We are taking notes, and the city manager may make some comments after public comments period is over. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Georgia Nordblom, followed by Audrey Phaloga and Frank Morton.
Good evening, city councilman and mayor. At the last meeting, we invited council members to visit our park. We understand that you are very busy, so we decided to bring some of our residents here this evening. Say hello to Frank Scro. This is Frank Scro. He is 99 years old and has been married to his wife Frida for 74 years. Frank just wants to finish his life in his own home and not be treated, threatened with being thrown out of their home, where they have invested their life savings. Frank and Frida, as with all ranch residents, are not on public welfare. Rather, they live on their social security check and Frank's small pension of about $75 per month. This is Frida, Frank's better half, also known as Fearless Frida. Last month, we lost our beautiful Frida at 96 years old. Frida is the 14th resident to pass away since the city imposed outrageous rent increases on the Ranch Mobile Home Park. Frida takes with her bundles of love and countless memories. She cared for her surviving husband Frank for 99 years, including 74 years of loving marriage. Famous Frida quotes was, "When the going gets tough, the tough get going." Golden years. No, these are the rusty years. Say hello to Barbara Lee. Barbara Bobby Lee moved to the ranch when she could no longer afford the increased rents at her old mobile home park. Less than three days after she learned rents would be increased by over two and a half percent times, Bobby became extremely upset, knowing she could lose her home and independence again. Despite the efforts of neighbors to calm her fears, Bobby suffered a debilitating stroke from which she will never recover. Henry Hank, oh, meet Harry, Henry and Marble Heather. Henry Hank and Marble Marty are longtime ranch residents. Hank is recovering from triple bypass surgery. Hank served in the Pacific Theater late in World War II. Marty lost her brother, whose destroyer was sunk in the Battle of South Pacific. Marty is suffering from Alzheimer's disease, making Hank a 24/7 caregiver. Hank was counting on his home to provide some benefits for his children. Now he is in fear of losing all value in his home. Thank you.
Audrey Phaloga, followed by Frank Morton and Vic Abranzo.
Audrey Phaloga, Ranch Mobile Home Park. This is Alex Hagyja, as in boat. The year 1956, Hungary revolted against the Soviet Union, much in response to U.S. hints that we would help them. Of course, we did not. Alex was the young guy dashing around and dropping Molotov cocktails down the turns of the Russian tanks. Most people cannot even imagine what courage that takes. The Russians had a way to find out who the rebels were. This usually involved torture. Alex found out he was on the Russians' execution list. He grabbed his family and literally walked out of Hungary with just the clothes on their backs. They ended up in Germany, where they were placed into a refugee camp. Eventually, the camp was assigned to either Australia or Canada. Alex and family were sent to Toronto. There he found employment in his trade as a tailor and was thrilled to find out the sewing machines were electrically powered. Alex and family ended up in Thousand Oaks, where he opened his own tailor shop on Moor Park Road. He eventually sold his shop, but still bears his name. This is Rich Helgenberg. Rich flew B-20 bombers as a gunnery specialist. Rich is another World War II veteran at the ranch. Richard's brother was a fighter pilot who lost his life on a mission over Holland. Rich and his wife Wanda cannot afford the rent increase imposed by the city and landowner. Yes, Rich was young once. Shameful how those who have so benefited from the sacrifices of our veterans forget so easily. Beryl was born in England, 1935, at age five. The Nazis began their bombing campaign in Great Britain for her safety. Beryl's family sent her to live with her family in Wales. Her brother was likewise sent to live with another Welsh family. There was some discussion between her parents on whether they should leave their apartment right away or stay another day. The family decided to leave at once. The next day, the family returned to their apartment to gather some things, and found the apartment was gone, totally destroyed in a bombing raid.
The next speaker is Frank Morton, followed by Vic Abranzo and Jim Wolfe.
Good evening. This is Frances Morton. I am a resident of the Mobile Home Park. I've been there for 14 years, my wife and I, Virginia. And I have a couple of vignettes or two people I would like to tell you about. One is Joan Osborne, and the next one is Hetta Hughes. First Joan Osborne. Joan's father was once captured by the Nazis and taken to Auschwitz. He luckily escaped, and because he could speak fluent German, he was able to return to his family in the Netherlands. Earlier at age five, Joan, her father, and pregnant mother trekked from their home in the Hague, Netherlands, in search of food. Joan's mother was carried on a handwagon as she had problems on foot due to a pregnancy. Now screaming from the sky came German Stukov fighters and began bombing and stracing the roadway. Everyone fled to the ditches and trees, leaving Joan's mother in a cart in the middle of the road. Joan dashed out and helped her mother to safety. Now what a brave little girl at five or any other age. The next is Hetta Hughes. Eight six years old, Hetta was born in Germany. When she was very young, her family moved to Prussia. Hetta was 16 years old. When the Nazis came, the family attempted to escape by train, but the train station was overrun by people trying to get out. So they evidently immediately headed towards the shipping docks, and there, and then Hetta got lucky. A sailor could not locate his girlfriend and had, and told 12 girls at the docks that he could save one in her place. Hetta was chosen to escape. Her brother escaped as well. But the area was partitioned, and they never saw their parents again if they actually did survive. Now since this stressful ordeal began with egregious rents dictated for the ranch, Hetta sobbed to her neighbors that she lost her home in Germany, she lost her home in Russia, Prussia, I mean, and she lost her home in America. She said, "This is America. This shouldn't happen here." And I agree with her. Let's empathize with Hetta and say, "You're right, Hetta. This is America, and it should not happen here."
Vic Abranzo, followed by Jim Wolfe and Bill Oakes.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you kindly. My name is Vic Abranzo. I'm the next generation. I'm the baby of this group at only 66. But I will tell you, my social security check and my veteran's disability do not come to $1,000 a month. I'm looking forward to having to deal with these issues. You were all provided a copy of a CNN article on the increments of raise that seniors on social security have received over the past few years. I would ask you respectfully to consider how this group, living with this kind of constraint, is supposed to deal with the alleged right of the landowner to a fair and reasonable return on his investment. A return by your calculation that far exceeds any increment in the money we receive, having worked for years in this economy. Despite almost a decade of my life in federal service, that's where I am at this point. I have to figure out how I'm going to survive if this is the best you can do for those that represent the generation before me. My generation and this prior greatest generation were and have been hardworking folks. None of them is on welfare, nor intends to. Most of them have more invested than the pro rata shares or lots that their landowner owns underneath them. We've tried to stand on our own. We'd like to be given the opportunity to finish. You have already, you had proposed to spend over $400,000 a year per unit to put up a facility for seniors through many mansions. You decry the lack of affordable senior housing, and yet you waived all the protections that these folks had at Ranch Mobile Home Park. I'd respectfully suggest that now is the time to sit down and consider, is there a way to come to a reasonable peace before lawyers eat up whatever there is left to afford these people an opportunity to survive. I thank you very much for your time. I hope some opportunity is made to sit down and try and resolve these matters. Thank you. One last thought, if I may. There was PowerPoint presentation of all the faces and persons you saw. With your permission, Madam Mayor, I'd like to hand that to the clerk for whatever the city deems appropriate. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Abranzo. Jim Wolfe, followed by Bill Oakes and Mel Silberberg.
My name is Jim Wolfe. Two years ago, the previous council voted 3 to 1 throughout a 30-year ordinance, an agreement governing Ranch Mobile Home Park. An agreement upon which the homeowners based their investment with assurances from the city and the landowner this agreement would continue in perpetuity. Ranch was placed under a new ordinance, 1559NS. This ordinance called for an increase in rents averaging about 3% for all parks each year for the next six years, except Ranch Mobile Home Park. Ranch was selected for special treatment. Ranch was to pay an increase of 22% each year for the next seven years, plus phantom interest on the total amount of the increase, plus a portion of the annual CPI. At the time of this decision, the average age of the park residents was 8 years old. The average income, $953 a month. Sum, $650 a month. 50% of the residents were disabled. The decision was so egregious that the residents initiated action against the city and were joined by eight caring law firms. The result to date has been two rulings by the Superior Court of Ventura County allowing the residents to proceed with claims that the city has potentially violated the Federal Fair Housing Act, as well as the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. Fair Housing Act, as well as the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. In spite of these victories, the residents reached out to the city and asked that they come to the table and fairly resolve this problem. The city's response? To use your tax dollars to hire an outside law firm, yes, that's right, your tax dollars to hire an outside law firm to fight these nasty octogenarians who had the audacity to object to a 22% plus increase in their housing costs each and every year for the next seven years. Apparently, the city feels if it stalls long enough, these old people will just die off. Problem solved. Or perhaps, they feel if they put even more stress and pressure on these people, that they'll give up. I'm here to tell you, this is not going to happen. We're going to fight. We're going to continue to fight. We will fight from our walkers. We'll fight from our wheelchairs. We'll fight with our oxygen bottles. We'll fight with every gray hair left in our heads until this city removes the stress and abuse it has put upon these grandmothers and grandfathers who have done nothing, nothing, to deserve this punishment. There is no justification for what these people have had to endure. You've seen them tonight. So in every sense of the word, ethically, morally, and legally, it's in your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. Bill Oakes, followed by Mel Silberberg and Kay Sekra.
Hello. I'm Bill Oakes from Thousand Oaks. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I wanted to speak a little bit about the Hydam proposed development on East Hillcrest Drive. The proposed Hydam assisted living business for East Hillcrest Drive is incorrect location for such a facility. While there might be a need for such a commercial building, the proposed location is not suitable for a business. The current zoning for the parcel land is for single-family homes. The developer, Hydam, has already been approved for single-family homes for the site, but now wants to build a business in a family community neighborhood instead of the homes. Our Hillcrest community is opposed to any zoning changes that would adjust the current zoning from low-density to high-density. We have learned about why there sometimes is a need to adjust zoning in regards to compelling reasons. There may have been a compelling reason for Hydam to file this application to build the business, but there's not a compelling reason to build this business on this parcel land in our community. If the Hydam developer is really serious about providing assisted living care to people of the city of Thousand Oaks, then they should possibly sell their current land to another developer for single-family homes. Then they should purchase a better parcel land suited for assisting living business that would also be located by the services the tenants would require. I also wanted to give a shout-out this evening to our friends here at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. The city of Thousand Oaks not only needs to meet the needs for seniors in the foreseeable future, find great locations for senior housing, but they also need to support the already-present senior communities, such as the Ranch Mobile Home Park. Thank you.
Mel Silberberg, followed by Kay Sekra and Clint Matkovich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager Mitnick. My name is Mel Silberberg and I've been a resident for 20 years in Thousand Oaks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. In the good book, The Senior Adult Master Plan, SAMP, it states the mission of the plan is to develop and promote a healthy, senior-friendly community. But if you read the local newspapers over the past few months, you might get a very different impression. Things are bad enough for seniors at the national and state levels, cuts in Meals on Wheels, senior nutrition, RSVP, and long-term care on Budsmann. We don't need to also deal with an unfriendly community. The city had the vision to commission the development and implementation of SAMP by the Council on Aging in 2007. But since then, the realities of demographic dynamics of an aging community are coming to fruition, and considerable uncertainty and challenges lie ahead. And believe me, you've heard a lot of that tonight. I mean, you've heard from seniors who deserve to be heard. The city needs to refocus its vision of the future. How will a 55-year-plus population, now at 37%, growing to over 50% between 2025 and 2030, impact the city in terms of housing, health, transportation, recreation, and even the economy? What if our seniors eventually can't age in place and need to move to a residential care facility for the elderly? Where shall they go? Where should we warehouse them? These seniors, these citizens, need to live within the city, their family and friends, and enjoy the time that they have left to spend where they have spent much of their lives. Many seniors gave their lives, and you've heard it tonight, many seniors gave their lives and limbs for this country. Many taught our children and others helped to develop technology and scientific excellence. Others helped build our city and they volunteer their services for over thousands and thousands of hours without compensation because they love what they do and they want to give something back. What can we do about these issues? Stay tuned and hear about the future in Agenda Item 9A. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silberberg. The last two speakers are Kay Sekra and Clint Matkovich.
Hi. My name's Kay Sekra. I live in Thousand Oaks. Last city council meeting, a Thousand Oaks citizen named Gail Henneker, I believe, stood up and made one simple statement. She offered you, the city council members, a friendly invitation to the Ranch Mobile Home Park so you could see where they live and see how they live. Her invitation was very sweet and polite, but anyone present could see that it was also a plea. I was heartened to see that our mayor asked for Ms. Henneker's contact information so someone would come. But I found a couple of days later that no one from the city had contacted Mrs. Henneker. So I visited Ranch Mobile Home Park. I want to let you know that I am now aware that my tax dollars are paying for the attorney the city is using to fight the judgment that was rightfully in favor of the Ranch Mobile Home residents. I am opposed and horrified. I want to strongly urge you to please visit the Ranch Mobile Home Park because what I saw was not at all what I expected to see. There are answers and solutions there to our senior housing needs, answers that preserve dignity, self-governing, pride of home ownership of actual Thousand Oaks residents. We could use less tax monies and federal assistance. The seniors there live off their pension checks. No one there even wants to be on welfare or Section 8. But the city's actions will destroy all the autonomy that they have, and that is morally wrong and it doesn't make sense. I saw that the seniors there, age 66 to 104, have cars and they help drive each other to get groceries and medications. I was made aware of the ones who are suffering and dying, but I saw that they had assisted living at its finest. The residents who are able assist them, they assist each other because they care and they want to. They have time. They have even eagerly offered to assist my family now while my 15-year-old son is gravely ill in the hospital. I saw the home where the one senior died from a stroke after hearing that our city had broken the promise to them to keep their rents at a fixed rate. And I saw the home where another is suffering from a stroke that occurred immediately after learning that she would most likely become homeless due to the city's broken promise. I saw the cracks in the sidewalks and the tiny space each resident had to park their home in due to the park actually being intended for travel trailers. I saw how unfair it is for our city to want to charge the same rent as the parks with more amenities and more space. And I saw on Zillow how the values of homes plummeted after the city raised the rents. I'd like to say one last thing on behalf of my son. He has severe complications due to celiac disease. It has affected his brain and he may become permanently disabled. He's had four severe events requiring emergency room services. But the nearest adolescent mental health hospital is in Ventura. He has only been able to get in twice. The other two times, the nearest hospitals have been full, and he has been shipped to Chino and now to Torrance. The hospital does not allow us to drive him there and our insurance does not pay for the ambulance service, which costs us $4,000 out of pocket. I keep hearing how the senior tsunami is coming, but there are thousands here in Thousand Oaks who are in the same shoes as my son, and the numbers are growing exponentially. There is not a single adolescent hospital in Thousand Oaks. Yet there are several assisted living facilities that have vacancies. Why don't we think and prioritize and help and support those seniors who we already have a responsibility toward, who are from Thousand Oaks? And help prevent families from becoming financially devastated and in need of public assistance in the first place?
The last speaker is Clint Matkovich.
Thank you, Mayor Beto LaPeña, members of the council, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Clint Matkovich. I'm proud to say that I've been a lifetime resident of our community for 32 years. In our community's 49-year history, there has perhaps been no other subject which has been debated or commented upon more frequently than that of our city's open space. Tonight, my comments will be no different as I wish to ask for not only the full support of the Thousand Oaks City Council, but that of the full support of the Cano Recreation and Park District Board of Directors, as well as the full support of the entire community in order to renovate an area of open space in Wildwood, sometimes referred to as the Olson Channel Green Space. This area of parkland lies in between Wildwood Avenue and Arbules, next to Wildwood Park, and is the home to many native animals, in particular hawks, owls, and bats. It is also home to three heritage valley oak trees. These oaks, along with two others, a couple of blocks away across the street from Wildwood Elementary School, are the last remnants of a larger oak grove which once stood in Wildwood. This parkland was created in the early 1980s after the last housing tracts off of Indian Mace that were constructed. After that, this area was virtually ignored. For the most part, a large portion of this property has been used to dump piles of dirt and green waste, which is left undisturbed for many months. This has been the case for several years. I am proposing that this area of open space be restored by the work of volunteers. Trails which have been subjected to erosion and have been encroached upon by tumbleweeds and other non-native species could be repaired and native plants and trees planted in their place. Scout groups could be recruited to construct park benches in order to earn merit badges. This would also teach these young children in our community a valuable lesson in civic pride. In addition, the use of volunteered workers should be used to minimize an impact on CRPD's budget. I call upon those on the council, as well as those on the park board and the entire community, support this effort. And I ask everybody to look at a Facebook page which I have created called Olson Channel Green Space. I have provided several pictures and other information. I hope for all of your support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Matkovich, could you repeat that website, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Olson Channel Green Space. It's a public site on Facebook, so anybody can view it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. The city manager was going to make some comments regarding some of the public speakers here tonight. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank everybody here from Ranch Mobile Home who came out here to introduce your plight to the public and to the city council once again. I am very sorry that you're having to go through this still and that 14 people have died since the city made a decision to change the mobile home ordinance and rent control to some extent. I wish I could be more direct, but due to litigation, I'm not able to say anything more. Mr. Mitnick.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the first speaker this evening had some comments about drainage issues in the Casa Cano area, in particular along Frankie Drive. We appreciate the packet of information provided to us. We asked our Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon, if he could chat with the gentleman, if he's still here out in the lobby. And if he's not, we'll be more than happy to follow up with him and perhaps have him come in and meet with our staff and work our way through those issues to the best of our ability. As the mayor commented, you had a number of speakers talking about the Ranch Mobile Home Park issue or issues. One theme I heard through their comments was concern about social services. So we'll be happy to follow up with the individuals who raised those issues to help make them aware of county, regional, or even state social services. We also do have a rehab program with city funds, some leftover redevelopment money and some CDPG funds that's available to folks who own their Mobile Home Park units. This is money that can be used to help do some improvements that might help in an indirect way, if not directly. The last speaker with respect to the Olson Channel Green Space, be happy to follow up with him. We'll have staff follow up from the city and CRPD to talk through his concerns and suggestions regarding restoration and renovation. We appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. We now move to the consent calendar, which is item number seven. Are there any items that you wish to pull? Mrs. Irwin?
I'd like to pull item 7F.
7F, as in Frank? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Who would like to move the remainder of the calendar? Mr. Adam?
I will move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Please vote. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mrs. Irwin.
I had a question for Mr. Spurgeon. If the parking lot on this item was in such bad shape, why wasn't it part of the original
That's a fair question.
I hope so.
When the scope of the project was being determined, that was probably about four or five years ago. And since then, we've had preliminary design and final design, and then we've been in construction for a little over a year. Originally, the scope of the project was to install the new improvements, including the new training center, which is in the location where the existing parking lot is. And there was frankly concern about budget, that we would have enough funding. So again, the scope of the project, the design, what was bid, was the new improvements specifically. Since the project has progressed, we've had some savings and we actually have available contingency budget to do this work. The parking lot does need to be repaired sometime soon, and it makes sense to do it now. It'd be cheaper to do it now. And then we would have not a patchwork of some new pavement and some of the old, remaining older pavement. With this change order, we still have about a half million dollars in contingency balance. So I think it makes sense to do it now. Hopefully, that helps.
Thank you for that explanation. I will move item 7F.
Mr. Adam has a question.
Oh, sorry. Thank you for pulling that item, Councilmember Irwin. I wanted to ask Mr. Spurgeon something about that as well. Thank you. Actually, not ask you something, but take a moment just to make a public service announcement. Our municipal service center is expanding, and one of the highlights of the And one of the highlights of the center, in my opinion, is the fact that it will dispose of your household hazardous waste. And that's, you know, the old paint you have sitting in the garage, the turpentine, the, the spray cans, the, the antifreeze, all this noxious stuff that you have collecting. Don't throw it down the drain, folks. Don't throw it in the trash. Take it to the municipal service center and they will dispose of it in a proper, environmentally safe manner. And now we're, we're expanding the center to 3000, 3,900 square feet. And what I want to ask Mr. Spurgeon is, will we have correspondingly longer hours now for the public to drop off these hazardous materials? Or how's that going to work?
Yes, we will. In the past and, well, currently and in the past, our household hazardous waste events have been once per month, first Saturday of the month typically. When the new facility comes online early next year, we will initially have twi, it'll be open twice per week. So many more opportunities, much more open time for residents to bring, residents and businesses to bring their hazardous materials.
Good. Yeah. I mean, I, my family's used it. It's very easy. You just drive up there with a big box of stuff and drop it off. And so it'll be open twice a week now instead of once a month. And just one more question out of curiosity. What happens to that stuff? You know, I'm, I'm sure it's being disposed of in a proper manner, but what, just exactly what, what do you do with it?
Most of it is recycled.
Oh, really?
So used oil, paint, many, many of the materials are collected. In the future, they'll be bulked, so it'll be much, much more cost effective to send those to recycling centers. Amazingly, many residents bring unopened cans of, of paint and other product that can be actually reused directly. And we have a program where people can come to the events and actually go to another area and look through, basically go shopping for free. And if you see a kind of paint that you need, you're, you're welcome to take it. And that'll remain, we'll have a, a location at the new facility where you can do that as well. And then whatever can't be recycled or reused that way is properly disposed of at whatever facility is, is appropriate.
Okay, that's interesting. And just so for everyone to know, tell everybody where the municipal service center is.
It's located at 1993 Rancho Caneo Boulevard in Newbury Park. That's essentially at the very end, north end of Rancho Caneo Boulevard. You go past the Amgen Campus and you make your way out there. And that's where it's at.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. So please, take advantage of it and dispose of your waste, hazardous waste in a responsible manner. You'd be glad you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. And to Ms. Irwin, you stated a motion.
Thank you for that PSA, Mr. Adam. And I'll again move item 7F.
Please vote. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the council meeting, we're moving up a department report. It is item number 10A, a status report from the Thousand Oaks Sister City Committee. And that will be presented in part by our senior analyst, Caroline Milton. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The co-chairs of the Thousand Oaks Sister City Committee are here this evening to briefly update you on activities relevant to the pending friendship and cooperation agreement between Thousand Oaks and the Shibei District of the city of Qingdao, China. The most recent event has been the signing by Mayor Bild de la Peña of a letter of intent supporting the desired collaboration between Thousand Oaks and Shibei. City staff will continue to work with the Thousand Oaks Sister City Committee as the collaboration with Shibei becomes a reality early in 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Milton. And to continue the presentation are Debbie Chang and Caballeric Rosemary Licata.
Thank you very kindly, Madam Mayor, Claudia Bild de la Peña, and the city council members. It is an honor for us to address the Thousand Oaks City Council to give you an update on the progress of our sister city committee meetings. The steering committee, which consists of Debbie Chang, Rosemary Licata as co-presidents, Beatrice Rustifo, secretary, along with Joe Letterer, president of the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, Caroline Milton, senior analyst, Thousand Oaks City Liaison. Being this is a community involvement-driven sister city relationships between Thousand Oaks and the Shibei District in China, we were fortunate to assemble a large influential group of community leaders to assist in the planning of our celebration. Before we share some of the plans, we would like to inform you, we are progressing very well since the last time we came before you. Our mayor, Claudia Bild de la Peña, has written an excellent letter to the Honorable Mayor Zhang of Shibei District Quinchao. Sister City stating the Thousand Oaks City Council unanimously approved the concept of the sister city project. As co-presidents of the steering committee, we also sent a letter to Mayor Mr. Zhang stating we are delighted, along with our influential community leaders, who will represent commerce, trade, medical, health, justice, technology, bio-pharmaceuticals, education, the arts, and tourism. Also mentioned, a recent meeting with Mr. Fu Yang, I hope I'm saying that right, Bahia Pharmaceutical Group, and Tony Lee, met with the steering committee. We were able to share with them an outline of future plans. They were very impressed. Before we share some of our plans with you, let me introduce co-president Debbie Chang, who will tell you about the important letter of intent we received regarding the friendly cooperative relationship between the city, the city of Thousand Oaks in the state of California, USA, and Shibei District Quinchao in Shandong Province in China. And let me hold up the letter of intent so you know it's in China, Chinese and American. Debbie?
Thank you, Rosemary. And we would like to thank you very much for signing the letter of intent because the officials in Shibei, Qingdao, need this letter in order to get permission and apply for visa to come here. And we'll let Rosemary tell you about what we plan to do when we receive them in probably next February. Thank you.
And because of Debbie, Debbie Chang, we were very, very fortunate to meet with Mr. Fu Chang and Tony Lee. He has a Bio Pharmaceutical Holdings Limited in Beijing, China, and Hong Kong, and also here in Thousand Oaks. And Tony Lee is the one that is the interpreter. And he also works with Tony Lee. So we are very, very fortunate to, to have him on the sister city committee. Now, we felt it is important for the entire committee to give input in the planning. So Graeme Liebowitz, general manager of the North Ranch Country Club, who is on our committee, offered to host our first reception meeting at the North Ranch Country Club on September 26, 2013. And some of the ideas that we presented, I'll just tell you a few. We intend to have forums when the Chinese delegation comes over so they could learn what we do and we can learn from them. So we plan to have a medical seminar. Greg Angle, the, excuse me. Greg Angle, the CEO and manager of the Los Robles Medical Center. He plans on having the Chinese delegation visit the Los Robles Hospital and perhaps having a forum with doctors and so on. This is the thing we, we plan on doing. Then for the justice, the district attorney of Ventura County, Greg Totten, is on the committee. Thousand Oaks Chief of Police, Commander Randy Pentis. Jeff Dean, excuse me, Ventura County Sheriff of Ventura. And perhaps some judges that we know would have a, a forum. Because we do things very differently here and in China. And also, the Caneo Valley School Unified School District under Jeff Barston, PhD. There could be conferences regarding education. And President Chris Kimball of the California Lutheran University will also be part, these people I'm mentioning are all on the committee. And we, he has Chinese students there, so it could be like an exchange, and Debbie is involved in that as well. And then Natalia Siniva, also on the committee, she's the executive director of the Nuevas Symphony, and she plans on having cultural things woven in what we do. And then we met, Debbie and I met the Chinese consul general very recently. So when the delegation comes over, we plan on taking them on a private tour and the tour of the, the upstairs quarters of the Ronald Reagan Library, because I know the people there. We can have a very, very nice reception and show them the library. Then we have to have a ceremonial, that's just a few things we will tell you. We have to have a ceremonial event when the two mayors sign the documents. So we plan on having a very wonderful gala luncheon at the Sherwood Country Club. I'm not going to tell you anymore about that, but I have, we have plans. That'll be very elegant. Now, the next reception meeting that we're going to hold is at the Stone House at the Westlake Village Inn. And it will be graciously hosted by John Nodder, who is also on the committee. This will be a community, committee, a team effort. Everyone will be involved. The public, the public may be invited to many of the forums and events that we have. So we thank you very kindly for allowing us to speak before you regarding the special project for the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a very detailed presentation. Appreciate that. Any questions from the dais? None? Okay. Thank you very much. I suggest, Mr. Fox, you brush up on your Mandarin. All right. For the signing ceremony. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Then we now move on to our first public hearing, and that is the First Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 8A, First Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. And a speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council regarding this public hearing, and we have no cards.
And the presentation will be made by our senior analyst, Caroline Milton.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In April 2013, you approved the use of $60,000 in federal Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds to assist many mansions with plans to convert a fire station facility near the Rancho Caneo Industrial Park to a year-round emergency shelter for single-parent families. Subsequently, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors identified 2016 as the year that Fire Station Number 35 would relocate from the current site on West Hillcrest Drive at the terminus of Lawrence Drive. The county has yet to address the disposition of the current fire station site, either as a future emergency shelter or to some other use. In the meantime, there is no current need for the allocation of the city's $60,000 in federal funds for the shelter project. However, the staff is requesting the council's approval to transfer these funds to a new activity that would offer some very low-income owner occupants of single-family homes an opportunity to receive a grant of up to $10,000 for health and safety improvements. The requested funds transfer would increase the single-family residential rehab program's first-year budget from $57,500 to $117,500. The new program would make a small but very positive step to address the urgent rehab needs of some very low-income property owners and would replace a former program that ended when the redevelopment agency was terminated. I'd be very happy to answer any questions that you may have about this proposed amendment to the CDBG action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Milton. Are there any questions? Mr. Adam?
Hello, Mrs. Milton. So we're being asked to reallocate $60,000 so low-income households can apply for that money to basically fix up their homes.
Yes, yes, that's correct. The staff is preparing the guidelines for this new program, and we will publicize it beginning in January of 2014. And we would expect to, to start with three to five homes that would be rehabilitated as part of this program through June, and then to allocate additional CDBG funding in the second year effective July 2014.
Okay. Well, that's what I was going to ask. How do we find the, the people and how, how do they apply?
We will be, the city will be working with a consultant. We will extensively publicize the program. And at this point, we believe that there, there would be a pre-application process. Perhaps people would submit postcards, and then we would have a raffle and draw a few names. And, and then we would, if those homeowners are eligible, we would go ahead and, and pursue the program, work with them, and they could each receive a grant of up to $10,000 for some very basic but substantial upgrades at their home, either roof or, or structural improvements, a new furnace, some very basic but very important health and safety improvements for these very low-income owner-occupied, single-family owners, homeowners.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Milton.
Mrs. Milton, is this money then also available for residents of mobile home parks?
Yes.
In, in mobile home parks?
Yes. Mobile homes, condominiums, and other single-family dwellings would be eligible. The key eligibility factor would be the income of, of the owner occupants. They must be verifiable as low-income households.
Yeah, and I'm sure that some of the residents of Ranch Mobile Home would definitely qualify for that. But I do have a question for the city attorney. If residents from Ranch Mobile Home were to apply for a grant, being that we are in litigation with the, with the park, would they still qualify?
I'd have to look at what the rules and the regulations are. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. I would hope, sure hope so. Thank you. Any other questions? None? Okay. Then we don't have any questions, or speakers, I should say, on this particular item. The public hearing was opened, and if there are no more questions, I will close the public hearing and open it up to a motion. Okay, public hearing is closed? Or do you still have questions of staff? None? Okay. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Adam?
I will move the amendment number one to the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Plan.
Thank you. Any questions to the motion? None? Mr. Price, did you have anything? No? All right, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is item 8B, and this is an update to our conservation and open space elements of our general plan. Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B, adoption of updates to the conservation and open space elements of the Thousand Oaks General Plan. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Thank you. The presentation will be made by our senior planner, Mr. Rick Burgess, along with Shelley Austin, the associate planner. Good evening. I know you're still looking.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the updates, the conservation and open space elements to you tonight for your consideration. The way we're going to do this is that I'm going to lead off with the conservation element and then my colleague here, Shelley Austin, will deal with the open space element. So our recommendation or our request, excuse me, is to, that you approve updates to the conservation and open space elements of the general plan. As you know, this is a state-required, both of these are state-required elements, and they were last comprehensively updated in 1996. It's definitely time for a new update now, and the planning commission has recommended The purpose of the elements, the conservation element provides policies for the protection of natural and cultural resources. The open space element identifies and provides policies for the conservation and use of open space lands. The primary changes in these documents are, we have new maps and data, and I hope you've had time to look at the, the new documents. I think they're, they turned out rather well. And we have more user-friendly format and, and we have a lot of pictures and dividers and a nice color cover, things of that nature. And we, there are actually very few changes to the existing policies because they've really served us rather well. So we've added a few things and modified them to meet the current situation, but other than that, it's pretty much the same. We have added paleontology and the climate change section to the conservation element. So I'd like to briefly just go over the, the basic chapters of the open, or conservation element, excuse me. The first one is landforms. And in this case, we're dealing with mainly scenic resources. And our policy focus here is hillside and ridgeline protection, scenic highway system, and our slope protections, which we have used for many years, and these seem to be doing a good job. I think if you drive around the city, it looks, the viewshed is actually very nice. Hydrology is the next section, and that covers a number of different things, several different subcomponents, lakes and, and lake shores. And our policy focus on all of these things is preservation of these things. Streams and creeks, and our idea here is to minimize impacts and new development on streams and creeks. Floodplains, basically try to direct development away from floodplains for obvious reasons. Stormwater retention and detention basins, this is becoming more of an issue because of the MS4 requirements. And so that's some, our main focus here is to make sure that design is sensitive to these natural environments. And then finally, water supply, conservation and reclamation. And the policy focus here is adequate supply to meet demand and water conservation. Biological resources, and here's a little biological resource. This is a bobcat. And we have this divided into plants and vegetation. And basically, our policies are to protect these resources. Wildlife, we're trying to minimize habitat fragmentation and preserve wildlife corridors in this case. Oak and landmark trees, and I, we, we have existing ordinances and resolutions, which I think have served us rather well in this regard. And wetland and riparian habitats, and again, we're talking about preserving wetlands and open space where possible. And encouraging habitat restoration. We've done that at Hill Canyon, Rancho Potrero, and Wildwood Creek with some success. So I think that's something we're going to be doing more of in the future. And then rare and endangered species. And that's a big issue in this area because we have a lot of endemic species in the Caneo Valley which occur nowhere else. So it's, it's very important for those sorts of things. And we try to avoid sensitive species at, at all costs. Next one is cultural resources, and this is a little restoration of a Chumash hut, and it, it actually looks very comfortable. These are archaeological resources. We try to keep those in open space areas wherever possible. And cultural resources, and that, that includes historic resources. And there are 17 historic landmarks and points of interest within the city. We've added a new section on paleontology, which deals with fossils, mainly in the northeast part of the city where you have sedimentary rock. And this is a new element. We haven't really had much problem with, problems with fossils, but if they do occur, we'd like to preserve those resources and involve experts if need be. Climate change, the state is anticipating temperature increases up by 3 degrees by 2050. And that's going to have local impacts on a lot of different things, but certainly on, on the open space. And what, their policy focus here is to comply with the intent of the, the state greenhouse gas laws. And you notice that we put those in all environmental documents now. And the city energy action plan is another way to minimize the carbon footprint here in the city. And then, see, I'm getting ahead of myself here. The, we have new maps that we've included with these, with the elements. And these are GIS maps. They have a number of layers. They're much more accurate than the original maps, but I have to say, the original maps from 19, whatever, 96, 97, actually were rather good. There aren't a lot of changes to this. So this one shows major landforms, drainages, and floodplains. This one includes biological resources and we're dealing here with plant communities and movement corridors. Those are very important. And this one shows various historical resources in the city. One of the things that we, we discovered as we began to look into this whole situation was that the county had a historic resource in Thousand Oaks that we weren't even aware of. And Commissioner Reynolds brought this to our attention. It's called the Hill Ranch Brick Cistern. The problem with this is that nobody had ever seen it, nobody had a picture of it, nobody knew exactly where it was. So we looked into it and did a lot of detective work, and it, it's quite a story, but I'll just get to the, cut to the chase here. We did find it. And this is it. It's located in the very northern portion of Wildwood Park. It's a cistern, so it's an underground structure, and it was probably originally devised to hold water for, I would think, domestic use and livestock. It was built about 1880. So that's an area of, actually a resource that we might, might want to designate in the future as a historic, city historic resource. And the other one is the Case Study House, which was just declared a, it was placed in the National Register of Historic Places on July, in July 2013, so it's very recent. These houses were built as, as kind of test houses using different types of building materials, and they were devised by very, very famous architects in most cases. And they were supposed to indicate the kind of house that the average person could, could be able to afford. I'm not sure they did that, but this one is, is really quite unique. It's made out of basically brick, glass, and steel. Hard to keep, hard to keep warm and cool, but at any rate, this is now on the register of historic places. And that basically concludes my remarks. I think I'll turn it over to my colleague, Shelley Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm going to talk about the open space element and continue with the PowerPoint that was up there already. Okay. The primary emphasis for the open space element update was on updating the narrative and maps to reflect the open space protected since 1996. 2,080 acres of natural open space have been added to the system, including land in 18 different open space units acquired through 50 separate transactions using a variety of acquisition methods. Protecting a ring of open space around the city has been a longstanding city goal, and this map shows the natural permanent open space that has been preserved. Trails are one of the important topics addressed in the open space element. Our current system contains 140 miles of multi-use trails, and they provide a really important recreational resource to the community. The open space element also addresses the importance of biodiversity and open space functions to increase biodiversity by protecting ecosystems which support an array of plant and animal life. Stewardship is another important issue addressed in the element. This photo is of the Caneo Canyon's Trail Bridge, which was installed in 2011 and filled a missing link in the Ring Trail around the city. The bridge was identified as a top priority in the Caneo Canyon's management plan, which was approved in July of 2010. And another important stewardship document is the COSCO Strategic Plan, which was approved in June of 2013. This table shows the open space system acreage. The open space system includes natural land, developed park sites, and golf courses and totals 16,813 acres and is approximately 44% of the city's planning area. This is a map of the open space system that shows the natural open space, parks, golf courses, as well as areas with important open space resources for possible future acquisition. And I'll address that in a minute. As I mentioned earlier, 2,080 acres of open space have been added to the system since 1996. The acquisition techniques included donations, dedication required by development conditions in conjunction with approval of development of a portion of the overall land holding, direct purchases, tax sale purchases, and density transfers through specific plan amendments, which allow higher density elsewhere in order to preserve the open space. The resources used to pay for some of these acquisitions were the Open Space Endowment Fund, general fund transfers, golf course fees, COSCO Trust Fund, and grants. And now I'd like to briefly highlight some of the acquisitions since 1996. The first one is 179 acres preserved in the Caneo Ridge area, which is located south of the 10123 freeway interchange, south and east of Rancho Road. The next one is Mount Clef Ridge. 141 acres were preserved there, and that's located in the, in the north side of the city between Wildwood Park and California Lutheran University, north of Olson Road. Next is the Hillcrest portion of the North Ranch open space. 113 acres were preserved there, and that's located north of Hillcrest Drive, east of Caneo School Road. 306 acres were preserved in Rancho Potrero, which is located on the south side of the city, south of Lynn Road adjacent to the Ranch with Sierra Vista in the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. Just a little bit further down Lynn Road to the west is Site I, which the city purchased in 2008, and that's nine acres. And it's located basically southwest corner of the city, west of Lynn Road. And for this one, I would just like to note that the planning commission recommended that city council consider renaming this Site I, but didn't recommend any specific names. So staff recommends that it be renamed Vista Del Mar Open Space. There are other name suggestions at the bottom of page four in your staff report if you're interested in looking at those. And unless the council directs otherwise, the site will be renamed the Vista Del Mar Open Space. Next, we have 30 acres that were preserved in the Skyline Open Space, Open Space, which is south of the 101 freeway, west of Hampshire Road. Next is Viasito Open Space, where 67 acres were preserved, west side of the city, and this is south of the 101 freeway adjacent to the Viasito Mobile Home Park. Next is the beautiful Western Plateau, where 191 acres were preserved through the Western Plateau Preservation Plan in 2002. And it's located on the very west side of the city, north of the 101 freeway. And finally, 622 acres were preserved in the Woodridge Open Space, located north, in the northeast area of the city, west of Sunset Hills Boulevard adjacent to the Lang Ranch Open Space. The open space element also identifies area with important open space resources for potential future acquisitions as open space. 17 areas are identified totaling 1,137 acres. Excuse me. This map shows the areas with important open space resources in yellow for possible future That, the recommendation is that the city council adopt the resolutions approving the Conservation and Open Space Element Updates of the Thousand Oaks General Plan. And staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Adam.
Yes, thank you very much. Congratulations on these two documents. They are coffee table-worthy, I must say. Beautiful.
Thank you.
And, and I firmly believe that these two documents, conservation and open space, go hand in hand because if you preserve wildlife, you preserve open space and vice versa. If you preserve open space, you preserve wildlife. So these are nicely presented together. Here's what I'm, what's on my mind tonight. There's talk about wildlife movement in the wildlife corridors. It's essential for our biological diversity, but there's a problem, an inherent problem in the Caneo Valley and all the way to Camarillo and all the way to the San Fernando Valley. Wildlife has a difficult time moving from north to south and south to north, from the Santa Monica Mountains in the south that run from Camarillo all the way to Griffith Park, and to the Santa Susana Mountains and the Seamy Hills in the north. And the difficulty is the 101 freeway. That is the barrier that prevents movement of these animals. And one of the things that we want to try to do, as stated in the program here, is that we're going to work with public agencies to solve this regional problem and to, to try to eliminate the isolation and fragmentation of these, that these animals are presented with. The sad thing is, just recently, it was reported that we, a mountain lion was killed along Liberty Canyon. They found its body along the side of the road hit by a car. And I don't have to tell you, there's precious little mountain lions left in the Santa Monica And for some reason, they want to cross at Liberty Canyon, and I, I think it has to do with the top topography. There's a dip there, and it's the natural progression into the Seamy Hills. The only problem is, there's an underpass there, and it's a paved road, and the animals typically do not, mountain lions in particular, do not like to walk on a paved road. So they try to cross the freeway, and this is not the first mountain lion we've lost at this, this crossing. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, only one mountain lion in the last 11 years has successfully made it across. And it, so the, the answer to this, and this is my, what I'm trying to get at, is, is a, is a wildlife tunnel there. A wildlife tunnel, and there has been one proposed. The cost is rather expensive, 10 million bucks from what I gather. But there are agencies that are working on this. The Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, the National Parks Service, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. What I would ask staff is, if you happen to know right now, you can tell me, but come back to us with an update or report on where we stand with this wildlife tunnel. Is there being money raised? Are there agencies involved with this, with this thing? And it's not just for mountain lions, although that's the most high-profile animal. It's for, you know, all wildlife. And is there a way for Thousand Oaks to get involved? Now, you may say, well, you know, that's down in Liberty Canyon, you know, that's a, that's a San Fernando Valley mountain lion, but they, these animals roam from Camarillo all the way to Griffith Park. There's a mountain lion living in Griffith Park right now, a couple of square miles, and it's, it's thriving there. So there, it's a regional situation, and these are all our wildlife. And I would really like you to, in the next session or two, get back to the council with what's hap, and give it an update on what's happening with this wildlife tunnel, if anything.
We can certainly do that. And you're absolutely right. Male mountain lions in particular have enormous ranges that actually cover almost all the Santa Monica Mountains. And, and the difficulty, of course, is getting to cross in any particular place you want them to cross. They cross where they feel they need to cross or where the, as you mentioned, the topography is, is the way it should be. So it's, it's a difficult issue, but you're absolutely right. It's essential to keep these populations going. So we'll look into that.
Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? None? Okay. We don't have any public speakers. I do want to, to make sure that there are no other questions before I close the public hearing. All right. Public hearing is closed. And we'll open it up to a discussion, motion? Mr. Adam?
Okay. Well, thank you. So I would move to adopt the Conservation and Open Space Element Updates for the Thousand Oaks General Plan, and I suppose I should also include that I would move that we rename Site I to Vista Del Mar Open Space, which I think has a nice ring to it. Yeah?
I'm sure that that was going to happen anyway unless we objected to it, but certainly we can include that. I guess it's, it's being named or changed to Vista Del Mar because when you hike all the way up, it gives you a view of the ocean.
View of the, view of the sea.
Yeah. No, Del Mar. It's the, the city and, and the ocean, but you have to hike out a little bit further, probably.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm sure that staff was discussing that, right?
So I'm sure that staff was discussing that, right? Yes, okay. I know the public hearing is closed, but anyhow. So yes, that's a very good idea. Any other questions? None? Okay.
Just for clarity, I just want to make sure you made your motion for both the Conservation Element and the Open Space Element. Okay.
Did, do that, yes. Both elements, Conservation and Open Space.
Great. If there are no further questions, then please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you to staff for what is really beautiful work and important work. I wanted to show to the audience, we have the Conservation Element right here. You will find it on the city's website, www.toaks.org, and the Open Space Element also on the city's website. Very important, and the Conservation Element does have the wildlife corridors for our area, as was shown earlier this evening. We now move to Item 8C, which is a municipal code amendment regarding social host liability, and that will be presented by our Assistant Police Chief, but our clerk will first open the public hearing. Thank you.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8C, a municipal code amendment regarding the social host liability, and a resolution adding administrative fee for community service administration. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the council regarding this public hearing, and we have no cards.
Thank you. Good evening. Assistant Police Chief, I will call you tonight.
Fantastic, that'll work.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Staff. Tonight, I'm here to present changes that we are proposing to an amendment on our social host ordinance and changes to the master fee schedule. I'm here presenting with Melissa Hurtado, the Revenue Operations Manager, as well as Charmaine Jackson, the Assistant City Attorney, to help address any questions after the presentation. The social host ordinance was adopted in two thousand and six, and it was a tool to reduce underage drinking. The fine is currently set on the master user schedule as for the first violation, twenty-five-hundred dollars, the second violation within a year, thirty-five-hundred, and the third within a year is five thousand. The social host ordinance, for those that may not be familiar with it, is for hosting parties at homes with underage persons that are consuming alcohol under that person's control, for both adults and minors that are hosting parties. The person that's hosting the party is the subject that is cited and is a civil infraction, and that civil assessment is that amount that I just talked about, the twenty-five-hundred, thirty-five-hundred, and five thousand respectively. The fines, the other cities in the county, Camarillo has a fine of five hundred dollars, Moore Park of twenty-five-hundred, Oxnard of five hundred, Seamy Valley of one thousand, and Ventura of one thousand. The only other city that offers community service as an option is Seamy Valley, and currently only two minors. To date, our social host violations, we've had one hundred and, we've had one hundred and two citations that have been issued. They're significantly down this year, which is great news. Hopefully, the message is getting out that it will not be tolerated, it is strictly enforced, and this is all about changing the culture of what's acceptable in our community to keep our youth safe and everybody else in the community safe. Currently, the methods of resolving the social host citation are to pay the fine in full, making arrangements for payments, contest the citation, and performing community service for minors. The current ordinance allows minors to perform community service in lieu of the fine. For the first fine, for the first offense within a year, it's sixty hours in lieu of the twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine, eighty hours if there's a second subsequent violation in that year, or the thirty-five-hundred-dollar fine, or the one hundred hours in lieu of the five-thousand-dollar fine. All these fines were adopted and are currently on the user fee resolution. As far as the status of where we are at on how these fines have broken down so far, forty-eight has been paid in full, paying installments were two, defaulted installment account was three, community service completed was twelve, community service underway is five, the defaulted community service was three, no payments made, twenty-two, and where the citation was dismissed was seven. Areas of concern: Currently, community service is only available to minors. The current number of community service hours is low compared to the amount of the fine. There's no fee charged to administer the community service, and community service offenders right now are available, community service currently is available to repeat offenders. Obviously, with this, we don't want to encourage the behavior, and so we were trying to make it, the service hours commensurate with the violation and the dollar amount. With a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine and only working sixty hours, that's about a forty-dollar-an-hour reimbursement. So I'm going to be seeking later on to ask for a change to increase those hours, but just to give you an idea, that sixty hours, like I said, for twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine, works out to be a forty-dollar-an-hour part-time job that we've allowed somebody to have. Staff recommends the below changes: Eliminate the age restriction for community service; Raise the number of community service hours to one hundred and twenty; Eliminate the ability to perform community service on second and subsequent violations within a year; And adopt a one-hundred-dollar fee to administer the community service approval and tracking process. What's important to know is, the community service that we've seen used so far in my assignment here in Thousand Oaks, is that it's available, the way it is available now to the minors, it makes the minors accountable to their actions, so the parents are not ponying up the money for them, and they've learned a great deal by taking on this challenge themselves and having to work off their own fine. What we also realize is there's segments of our population that can't afford twenty-five-hundred dollars and might also benefit from providing community service in areas that we've deemed necessary. One thing that we found with our minors was that after the community service required hours, that oftentimes, they would do more than the required hours because they had made new friends, they had a new respect for their community, and they took ownership in what they could do to make the community better. Currently, one of the community service members that we have is going to be participating in a new venture called Social Change Theaters. You may be aware of our reality parties that we've hosted. For those that are not aware of reality parties, it's in conjunction with Behavioral Health, the School District, and other partners, that we host a party at a house simulating what takes place at these underage drinking parties. We walk adults through to show them what exactly is taking place, give them an opportunity to ask questions, and then we have a forum afterwards where we can discuss with them the dangers of having underage drinking in their home. The Social Change Theater is going to be just a slight spinoff of that because of requests from parents to have us help open a dialogue between them and their minor children on the dangers of drinking at friends' houses, the vulnerability that they leave themselves open to, and so that is going to take place on November twenty-third at the Teen Center. A couple of the persons that we have that are going to be providing community service are going to actually speak at this Teen Center event, and that'll help facilitate the information of what social host is, how to avoid being cited for it, and safer options that they can have for having gatherings that are in a safe manner to keep our community So my recommendation, our staff's recommendation, is to take the following actions: Read the ordinance in Title only. Further reading to be waived. If no objection, to introduce the amending, ordinance amending to Title V, Chapter Twenty-Six of the City Municipal Code, Social Host. Adopt a resolution adding a hundred-dollar fee to the citywide user fee schedule for the administration of community service in lieu of social host fine. Expand community service to all ages. Raise the community service hours from sixty to one hundred and twenty. And eliminate community service hours listed for second and subsequent violations within one year. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Chief Freyhoff. I was just wondering about a clarification on the eliminating, where was I? Yeah, it's bullet point number three, eliminating the ability to perform community service on second or subsequent citations issued within a year. What happens, can you elaborate on that?
Absolutely. Currently, if somebody continues to violate the social host, they're allowed to continue to just do community service where there's no fine imposed. We've decided that we feel that one opportunity for community service is substantial. If they decide to have a second violation within a year where they've hosted another party and are cited again within one year, that community service will no longer be an option. This process has never been about collecting money. It's about awareness, prevention, and safety, and so we're looking to help those who may not be able to afford that violation, where they can now, the adults can now also do community service in lieu of paying the fine, but they get one crack at that. If they violate it again, they will pay the fine commensurate with that violation, the second and subsequent violations.
Thank you. Councilmember Irwin, followed by Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. Freyhoff. I had a few comments first. It would be great if this brochure by Behavioral Health could be put online because it has some great facts in there about the effectiveness of social host. And just to let everybody out there know, it looks like the trend for drinking for ninth graders in Thousand Oaks and eleventh graders in Thousand Oaks is going down. And I think you mentioned, but it's really important to emphasize that on the brochure, it says there are less than three percent, I think, one person was a repeat offender, so that does show the effectiveness of the social host ordinance. So I'm really glad that we get all this information like that. So my first question is for Ms. Hurtado. Obviously, we had a large number of fines that were not collected, and my understanding is this new process of going through finance should allow us to be more effective. Could you maybe explain that?
Yes, we've recently spoken with our collection agency that we currently use for utility billing and DUI billing, and we put together a draft procedures that will utilize a collection agency and also the court system so that we can be sure that we're strictly enforcing the fine.
So we should end up with a better rate of collection?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, one of the comments here, and this is from Mr. Freyhoff, is that sixty-six percent of law enforcement don't have any second thoughts about imposing social hosts, but that still leaves thirty-four percent. Are they having issues with issuing these violations, or what does that statistic mean?
I think oftentimes, you know, officers feel like there's a balance that they're trying to do when we enforce laws, and without knowing the exact breakdown of where those statements came from, I know that there was a survey that was sent out, you know, they go into it with an idea of, if you have three people that are there, you have a violation. Are they feeling compelled, one hundred percent committed, to issuing that citation, understanding that it's a substantial fine, and they are constantly looking to balance the safety of the community, the impact of the people that are involved? And so I would say that sixty-six percent just believe straight out that they're going to enforce it without any having to think about, where the other thirty-three or thirty-four percent say, you know, they still look at these events and determine, is this the proper thing? I have to make the right decision. Am I acting balanced? Am I acting with the best emphasis in mind of this particular violation as we do with all violations? But I can tell you from researching and seeing the notifications we receive for parties where there's social host violations being taken, in every one of those instances, I've seen a citation attached with it. So although they may be thinking, you know, about the citation before they're issuing it, or having second thoughts, or determining if it's the best course of action, my experience since being here is that the citation is issued.
Okay, so when you have that the violations, I mean, there is a big drop in the number of violations this year, you really do believe it's not because it's not being enforced, it's really because people are getting the information out?
Absolutely.
All right, and then, let me see. I think that that's it. I just, I do want to commend the Youth Commission and all the other community groups that have been putting on these reality parties. I think there were five very full reality parties. Basically, you have a hundred and twenty adults going through, and they're all learning about social host, and I think that's probably a big reason also for the drop in the number of violations. So thank you very much for the update, and I hope finance can find a way to get everybody to pay that makes this mistake.
Thank you. Councilmember Price.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a concern about the number of people that are just blatantly ignoring the citations, and it looks like there's about twenty-five percent of them who either haven't paid anything, and, or began their community service hours and then just walked away from it. And I question a couple of things. First of all, having spent the day in the Finance Department, I heard firsthand about the efforts that are going to be undertaken to collect on those debts. I just wonder how far we're going to go, how far we're going to chase these people for the money, and there's an expense to that, so obviously, there's some decisions to be made there. But in addition to that, I'm concerned about the management of these additional community service hours, because it's my understanding that up until this point, we've only had a few people, but managing just those few people who've been doing those hours has been a burden for the person who's been doing it. So by increasing or doubling the number of hours, I'm just, I'm questioning, who's going to do that? Who's going to manage those community service hours? Anybody have that answer?
Well, currently, we're only allowing minors to perform community service, and we have one person who is pretty dedicated to helping the youth and getting their hours served. But what we're looking at doing this time is making that the responsibility of the person cited. We're going to give them some resources. They're responsible for contacting those resources. We will be tracking and following up and so forth in the Finance Department to ensure that the hours are completed, but we are going to give them the resources and make sure that they have, United Way, for example, has a great website that has a whole bunch of resources available, and we just want to make sure that they are, it's in their hands if they want to have the fine waived. We want to put it in their hands to make that decision to follow up.
Thank you. Will there be any requirement that those community service hours be served here locally, or can they be served just anywhere?
We would like them to be served here locally. The problem is, I don't know what the demand for community service is out in the community, so we'll be directing them to perform in the community, but we'll have to just play it case by case to see what's available.
So that their hours will be contingent upon some staff-level approval?
Correct. The Police Department will be approving all of community service requests.
Okay. And then, with respect to the collections of these delinquencies, probably going to go down if we're going to allow adults to do community service as well?
That's the hope. We have had requests for community service from adults in the past. We have a lot of youngsters that are over eighteen, but, you know, are not financially in a position to pay such a large fine, so we're hoping that this will allow them to pay their debt to the community by serving the community service hours.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to go back to the citation issue. You mentioned that in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, rather, there is a dramatic drop. Is that only being attributed to the fact that we've been doing the program for six-plus years, or did we do something different in two thousand and twelve that maybe communicated the message better? I guess my question is, did we do anything different in two thousand and twelve than in two thousand and eleven?
Yeah. Commander Pentis, our chief, and myself spent a great deal of time in our first year back here in this community, as your chief and assistant chief, reaching out to as many as we could reach to as far as juveniles and their parents, including addressing it at the high school level with the incoming freshmen with their parents on the orientation night. We had an opportunity to talk to them about choices, consequences, and what that entails, including social host and being safe. One thing that we know is that after a tragedy has already occurred, our ability to talk to them significantly diminishes because they're thinking about the tragedy, or if they're already in trouble, they're not listening to us either. So we had asked the schools if we could come and speak to them at a time when they weren't in trouble, where we could just tell them, you know, every decision you make comes with consequences, and those consequences, you know, you may be a good kid, and most of the kids are good kids, but they're one bad decision away from a disaster, and that's what we convey to them, is you don't have to make that bad choice.
Yeah, I would, and I think the council would agree, I don't think there's any question that is the reason why it's four instead of fourteen and nineteen. Your personal engagement, there's really no substitution for that, and I know you recognize that. Are we continuing that program, either with you two, or have you passed that on to some of the other deputies?
Yeah, currently, our school resource officers help a lot with that as well. We do have B coordinators that we have that attend our neighborhood meetings, and that as a matter of fact, I was at a meeting today with the Canejo Valley Unified School District, asking to once again go back and speak to the parents and the children in our high schools and middle schools so that we could again address those issues about schools and middle schools so that we could again address those issues about choices and consequences at times when they're more apt to learn and listen.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Minnick, I think if you haven't already, raising this issue with the school district, and if they haven't already embracing this program, that's a pretty dramatic jump. For the viewing public, just very briefly, in 2007, when we started this, the number of citations was 17, and then it went to 13, then 19, 2010, 16, then 19 again, last 2012 was 14, 2013 is four. So dramatic changes. And so I know Chief Pentis kind of took those upon himself, as you also did, and obviously the metrics there are undeniable. I think we need to continue that because it's obviously working.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Chief Pentis and I are completely committed to the safety of our community and the youth. We have to reach out to them. They have to understand, and you can tell by the flyer, once it gets posted, how many are aware of social host, how much more work there is to be done to let them know that it exists, not just for the kids, but for parents as well. And letting parents know that when their child comes and says, well, they're doing it at so-and-so's house, that that doesn't make it okay. There's a violation to be had there, and a lot of it is education. People are just unaware, and we're here to help them become aware so they can make better choices on what they choose to do.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Price.
Yeah, I just want to be clear on the fine structure then. If we're, if we're offering community service hours to adults as well, and somebody walks away from that obligation, then the fine structure that we currently have in place remains in place? And any hours are credited, any hours that they've done are credited? Or do they get no credit because they haven't completed them? And I guess that might be a legal question. Does that make sense, Ms. Jackson?
It makes sense.
No, we currently don't have any kind of hours credited program available. So if they do not complete the community service, we will bill them the actual amount of the fine. Now, we will work with them if they were not able to complete the community service within the allotted time. We are always willing to work with the individuals, but if they blatantly walk away, we are not crediting them with the hours at this time.
And what time period do they have to complete these community service hours?
One year.
It is a year?
Yeah.
Okay. And I suspect that in certain instances, we're flexible with that as well?
Absolutely.
Given people's circumstance?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Irwin?
Actually, I think maybe we would want to consider that if somebody finished, let's say, half of their community service, and all of a sudden they have a job, that they should be able to get credit toward their fine. I mean, do you have that sort of flexibility without us voting on it?
I can probably answer that question. I haven't seen the form, but typically what, in this type of a circumstance, remember the imposition, the ordinance sets forth a fine. In order to allow them to do community service, they are, we are offering it to them under certain contingencies. And typically, we would say, if you don't perform the community service, then the full amount is due. So there's no legal prohibition to saying that the full amount is due. As staff said, we will, you know, we'll obviously work with the people who get the citation as to whether or not, you know, give them more time to finish performing the community service. We can certainly look into whether we want to add some language in there that, you know, that we give the police department or the finance department the discretion to prorate the amount of community service if there was some good faith effort on the person's part. We can certainly look into that. It doesn't require any type of council decision tonight, though. That's something that city staff can do on its own.
So we wouldn't have, we would not need the wording in the ordinance?
I don't think we need it in the ordinance.
Well, no? Okay.
But I would certainly have an interest in looking at that.
And I would agree with that, that makes perfect sense, that if you've got somebody who's been diligent about doing their community service hours, and now it's a young person who's gone out and gotten themselves a job, then we should be willing to work with them.
I do have a question for Assistant Chief Freihoff. On the seven citations that were dismissed, what were the circumstances that led to dismissal?
You know, I'm not familiar with each of the dismissals on why they were dismissed. I have not dismissed any since I have been the assistant chief. So, but there would be, if there wasn't enough underage persons that were drinking, or if there was some circumstance where they didn't have the right proof to indicate that they were, that the juveniles that were there, or the underage people were actually consuming alcohol, there could be several reasons as to why that would happen. But for these specific seven, I'm, I have, I'm not sure. I did not dismiss any of them.
Okay, then you're off the hook.
But to touch base on the, as far as the fine and the prorating, like we said earlier, this is not about money. It's not about us making money. This is about deterrence, holding people accountable for decisions that they're making that are endangering our youth. And if they've made a good faith effort, I don't see any reason why we would not prorate that amount commensurate with the service that they have completed.
And actually, I'm just looking at the ordinance right now. There actually is a sentence that says that there's no reduction in the penalty. It's on subsection G of 52605. So I would just suggest we add the language unless approved by the city manager or designee.
Yeah, so we do need to add language?
And that'll take care of it.
In order to incorporate what Councilmember Irwin suggested?
Yeah, we can add that tonight to the first reading.
Okay, let's do that. I think it makes sense. The, if there are charity organizations that would like to have people who have been fined to, or cited to help them with community service, how would they get in touch with you? I'm imagining you already have a list, but if there were other organizations that would be interested, how would that happen?
United Way is a great organization that actually has a beautiful website, and you can go on there and search for hundreds and hundreds of different opportunities. A lot of them are very local, if not Thousand Oaks, they're within Ventura County. And I was actually really surprised in doing the research at how many volunteer opportunities are available.
But I think, was your question if I was somebody that had a mound of dirt that I wanted to had removed, and I had volunteers available to me, could I contact the city and ask that volunteers be used to remove that mound of dirt, perhaps?
No, but it would have to be a 501(c)(3), for example. Couldn't not just be a homeowner?
Correct. But they, I believe that they could contact, we don't currently have, we don't currently have a mechanism for them to contact and add them to a list, but I know that there are numerous volunteer websites for people that, for 501(c)(3)'s that are available for the volunteerism that we could submit, have them track, and then capture the hours and then provide to us.
Okay, very good. Are there any other, Mr. Adam?
Just a comment. I'm really heartened to see that the social host ordinance is working, and the violations are decreasing, and I'm also heartened to see that we're focusing on deterrence. I mean, let's not even get to the social host ordinance. Let's deter underage drinking before it even happens. And, you know, we all owe a debt of gratitude to Councilmember Irwin, because I know she has been very determined to work on this issue in her tenure here in the council and to prevent underage drinking and drug use. So thank you. As a father of two teenage kids, and Mr. Fox has some teenagers, Mayor Bill of Penna will be having some teenagers soon. I mean, this is a big issue in our community. Let me tell you, with the advent of social media, Twitter, texting, Facebook, a party of five kids can turn into a party of 200 kids in a matter of an hour. And I'll tell you, that is a dangerous mix if you're going to have someone with the height of irresponsibility to serve alcohol or something like that. And so it's essential that we have this ordinance in place, and I just wanted to comment. And then I think all my questions have been answered, and I'm happy to bring it to a vote.
Piggybacking on your comments regarding social media, obviously, yes, within an hour, a party can grow from just a few to a couple hundred. That is why it's even more remarkable to see the number of only four so far citations issued this year.
I'm here to tell you that it doesn't take an hour.
Oh, okay, well, it was just an example.
I've handled a number of crimes where that has happened in minutes.
Okay, and Mr. Adam, was that a motion, or was that just, what was that?
Hey, yeah, I would motion that. Let me get to that, that we amend the municipal code regarding the social host liability and resolution, adding the administrative fee for community service.
We do need to include the revised language to incorporate Ms. Councilmember Irwin's suggestion.
Oh, yes, and include the revised language to incorporate Councilmember Irwin's suggestion.
To prorate?
To prorate the community service. Yes.
To allow prorating if approved by the city manager or designee.
To allow prorating.
That's a good idea.
Of community service by the city manager or designee.
Yeah, very good. All right, thank you. Any other comments? No? Please vote. Oh, I forgot to close the public hearing, didn't I? Can we, can I just close the public hearing and then we vote? Thank you. Mr. Fox?
The motion carries 5-0, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 26 of the municipal code relating to social host citations.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Item 9A is an annual report given by the council on aging, who have been patiently waiting in the audience here in the seats. And the presentation will be made by the council on aging chair, Dave Grimm. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor D. Lepena, council members, city manager Mitnick, and staff. My name is Dave Grimm, and I am honored to be the chair for the council on aging. This has been a great year to be a part of council on aging. The folks you're going to hear tonight have been the mainsprings, have been the drivers of so many activities for our organizations. And I think you'll enjoy hearing them, as well as learning about the things that we have done, as well as we're looking towards the future. Now, not just because of the hour, but I think we're all ready for a stretch. So anybody who's a part of our organization, council on aging, SAM, please stand up and just get the blood rushing again a little bit. Thank you. Thank you so much for all your hard work and dedication. Thank you so much. All right, I know I hear Francine saying, Grimm, get back on script. Come on. Where are we? All right. Tonight, we are going to briefly highlight a few of the many programs council on aging and SAM have implemented or partnered to accomplish the task of representing the senior population. We were very successful this year in producing the senior buzz, advising staff, developers, and agencies on senior-related projects, hosting knowledgeable speakers at televised meetings, hosting senior of the year, and managing SAM implementation. Now Commissioner Fatheringham, our SAM chair, will introduce the SAM team leaders. Nick?
Hey, Dave. Good evening, mayor, council, city manager, and staff. Tonight, we are going to ask each of the team leaders to present a brief summary of their team's accomplishments and goals for the, in this challenging journey. So let's start with Kim Guy, volunteer for the assistance and volunteering team.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Kim Guy. I work for Bright Star Home Care. I'm also a volunteer for the assistance and volunteer team. And I've also had the pleasure of being the Saturday core team leader for the Canale Connection, which has been the main goal of the assistance and volunteer team. It has truly been an honor to work with these wonderful, dedicated group of volunteers in our community, and we wanted to make sure that we had, made a special thank you to the Oaks Shopping Center, as well as for hosting the location, as well as our partners' agencies. In the last six months, the center has served 372 citizens with 743 service and volunteer requests. We have also been able to help over 1,800 patrons find their way through the Oaks Shopping Center. In addition to the hundreds of city transit, environmental, senior concerns, CRPD, Global Center, and Teen Center publications that have been distributed at the Oaks Mall. The assistance and volunteer team has also created and continues to maintain a website, www.canaelconnections.org, which serves as an online resource database for all ages. In evaluating Canale Connections, the team believes servicing 372 citizens who may not have had access to these services has been a success, and has recommended to the council on aging that the center continues. We have, however, learned some great lessons. Staffing the center for six days a week has been a challenge. A staffing person in charge of operation is critical, and the website must be improved for ease of use and access. We do understand council on aging has recommended not continuing the center due to lack of staff oversight. The team hopes, however, that the city council will consider the recommendation alternatives. Thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I'm now going to turn the time over to Paul Noor, who is the health team leader.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, city staff. I want to go way off agenda for a second and just thank you all for all the work you're doing, just waiting to get up here and listening for an hour and a half. I appreciate how much attention and energy you give to this job all the time, so thank you. I'm here on behalf of the health team. The health team has a mandate, and the mandate is to help create an environment where older adults can thrive, and where they can thrive through engaged, active, and informed lifestyles. We have a very active team, health, of course. Everybody's interested in health. We have a big team. They're pictured here. We have more people, a very impressive group of resumes working on our agenda. We have four primary strategies that we use to move forward our mission. One is to promote education, any way we can, get information out to people. Two is to promote movement and activity. It's important for health and well-being in so many ways. Three is to facilitate access to information, to programs, to education, whatever people may need. And fourth is to advocate for the needs of seniors and older adults in whatever fashion they might need. We have two specific initiatives that fulfill some of these strategic strategies. One is Live Well, Age Well. This is something we're very excited about. It has been on our agenda for, believe it or not, years. We've been talking about this, and we have finally kicked off this program of, it's a monthly seminar series where we're bringing members of the healthcare community, members of the wellness community, and trying to get some little bit novel angles on content to bring to older adults in the community. This is also an ideal topic to piggyback on the 50th anniversary programs that we have in the city. We have Live Well, Age Well. We have programs lined up. We have a subcommittee of people working on this, and we're ready to plug in to, you know, kind of programs that the city's offering if you want to bring in the element of Live Well, Age Well. I know there's a health component to the 50th program, so we're there, we're ready to contribute. So council, staff, who's ever involved in that, keep us in mind, we're here. The other initiative we have is Canale Walks. You heard about that last year. This continues as an advocacy program for walking and movement in general. Running out of time, so I guess to wrap up, you know, in alignment with the idea of a healthy vision, of our vision for healthy aging for older adults in the Canale Valley, going forward, we are going to focus on continuing Live Well, Age Well. We are going to continue the advocacy work of Canale Walks, and we want to focus on public health issues and advocacy where there are opportunities. So thank you very much for briefly listening to this update, and I would like to introduce Irma Tucker, who is the housing team co-chair. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Irma Tucker, and I am the team co-leader for the housing team of SAM. It is my pleasure to be working with our team leader, Russ Watson, and our dedicated committee. We have a very active team, and I would really like to thank each and every member of our team, many of whom have served on this committee since its inception over five years ago. The housing team members have a sincere interest in providing, in improving the, maybe if I put my glasses on, it would help a little bit. Okay. We have a sincere interest in improving the quantity and quality of housing options for seniors. We are most interested We are most interested in exploring alternative housing solutions because we understand that simply building more units may not always be the smoothest path. This past year, the Housing Team partnered with a number of existing provider organizations and supported many community programs. There's a few of them represented on the slide. The team has also provided education and research on housing alternatives for seniors and boomers. The success of your Senior Adult Master Plan is looking to the future. We must not lose focus on the fact that our population is growing older. We must continue to frame the problems and identify the opportunities facing seniors and aging boomers related to housing options. This includes researching current data and pertinent information provided from the next citywide survey, looking at housing alternatives like home share, home share matchup programs, and creating, together with city staff, a user-friendly information packet to assist in home modifications. We are looking forward to another successful year. Thank you for your support. Now I would like to introduce Annette Versima, Recreation Team Leader.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. I have a great co-leader who is here, Allison Barnes. And thank you for coming, Allison. Together, we have a great team with a great mission statement to reflect our team's goal. That is, to accommodate a growing aging population with relevant programs and services. We focused our objectives on, or four objectives this year and realized we needed a researcher to help us with future needs. Cal Lutheran University has provided us an intern who has already started on the project. Working with the global and local business, we were able to help with a number of collaborative offerings. CRPD and Global Center staff have also made many positive changes at the center and other community centers for older adults. In 2013 and 14, we will merge with the Health Team to enhance our efforts, continue working with the CLU intern and host the Youth vs. Experience Tennis Event again, which we believe will be a great addition to the 50th anniversary celebration. There's a photo. We will also be looking for more opportunities to focus on legacy activities. And now, but not least, our Transportation Chair, Sherri Phoenix.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and Staff. I am Sherri Phoenix and we have a great team of people that meet once a month at the Transportation Center. Our team's mission is to improve the quality of life for Thousand Oaks seniors and all residents by advocating for enhancement and maintenance of our city's existing high-quality public transit. With the help of the City Transit Program Manager and MV Transit, we achieved some impressive accomplishments this past year. Our number one goal was transit education and we have held three workshops to date. Our fourth one is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. That workshop is full, but we're taking reservations for the February workshop and I invite you to join us. Other goals and other accomplishments include Saturday bus service, thanks to the perseverance of city transit staff, and more Ventura County Citizen Transportation Advisory Council representation. As you can see, we have an ambitious set of goals for the coming year and we look forward to pursuing them tenaciously. You can help us see one of our goals achieved by ensuring that Thousand Oaks has full representation attending each meeting on the Citizens Transit Advisory Committee. We have amazing team members that actually use the bus system as part of their daily lives. They ride both fixed route and dial-a-ride slash ADA systems to evaluate their efficiency and efficacy and determine where improvements can be made. We are ambassadors and advocates for our transit system. That's it for me. Thank you for listening. Nick?
Thank you. I want to thank all of the teams for the outstanding work that they've done this year and their dedication to the project and all the projects that they worked on in our community. The overreaching goal of all SAMPIC teams is to provide information to the public and to advise local agencies on concerns and solutions. Thank you for your continued support of the Senior Adult Master Plan Project. Vice Chair Loomis will now conclude the Council on Aging Report.
Good evening. The slides speak for themselves. The accomplishments speak for themselves. And with your kind help, which you have so graciously given us and your great support for the last six years that I've been involved with this effort, I think we can count on your support for these aims. We need you to consider utilizing the teams in advisory capacity on problems and projects that involve seniors. We ask that we close the Caneo Connections, but we maintain the website with its improvements. That we consider Live Well, Age Well Initiative for the 50th Anniversary Celebration of the city. And finally, we recommend support of an increased VCC TAC participation and longer DAR ADA service hours. That concludes the bulk of our presentation. At this particular point in time, I appreciate the opportunity to serve with Dave Grimm, who, whose battery has run down a little bit. And so that's the reason why I get stuck in at the last minute. May I take your questions?
Mr. Loomis, thank you so very much for a very thorough presentation. And it takes just so much effort to put goals like these together on paper and then make them come to fruition. And as you said, it's been taking for some of you, five years or so to get to where we are. And we really, really appreciate it. And I know you thanked the city council, but really, it is a labor of love for you. You put in many, many hours. So thank you for doing that. And of course, the goals look fantastic and I know that transportation is, is a top priority as well. And I see that we have Mike Hauser here, who is working with you on hopefully having that become a reality, if not sooner than maybe later. But thank you. Are there any questions? Mrs. Irwin?
I, I, I know we say it every year, but you guys are an amazing, passionate group and we really, really appreciate what you do for the city council and for the seniors in our community. And I know there's some disappointments along the way. I know that the, the Council on Aging really advocated for the Many Mansions Project, but we're going to hope that we can find another spot for that. And we certainly appreciate everything you've done. I also want to say, Francine, you're amazing and we know how much work you put into this and how much you love those seniors. I did, I had one question and then a couple of additional comments. You were talking about a mobile, I know that the suggestion by Council on Aging is to close the Caneo Connections and there's some mention in the staff report about a mobile CCR.
Yes, ma'am. What that does is going mobile allows us to plug into what is current these days. I think, was it person Adam said that what can happen by the use of social media? And having, closing a site doesn't mean necessarily that we're going to stop because we're not. We found out that we can quite handily get with a small electronic device, put a team at events where people are and plug them into the resources that are available and show them and/or show them how it's done. So we'll go from one to another.
So you're not talking about a, like a, you're talking about being at events then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's, that's great. And then, you know, a couple of the other things, I know you were going full on into the walking program, but I thought you, it was a very pragmatic approach to look at, you know, these programs are already available and why reinvent the wheel and we'll, we'll do advocacy instead. And, and also on the transportation, trying to encourage seniors to use the fixed line as opposed to the dial-a-ride, I thought is great. And, and having education to show them how, how to ride the bus is, is excellent suggestion too. So if you really delve in there, there's just been a lot of thought by this entire group and it is truly appreciated.
Thank you very much. And, and we need to give a thanks to our cooperative partner, the, Mike Hauser and his folks.
All right. Mr. Price.
Yep. If I could just ask, is it the staffing issues that make the continuation, or the continuance of the Caneo Connections difficult and therefore?
That is one of the issues that makes it difficult. There, there are a number of them.
Are, are we disappointed with the numbers that are there as well?
No, sir. If you take a look at the numbers, we, we actually did very well.
I'm thinking we're coming into what promises to be a big time of year where those services would probably be stretched. And I guess if you're not able to staff it, then...
Well, what we were doing was we were reaching a little further perhaps than our grasp, but we have been providing for a long time, Senior Services Directory, which now is online. And sometimes it works better if the, if we take a Mohammed to the mountain, so to speak.
Sure.
How about if I explain it a little bit too? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. My name is Kim Guy, again. It, it's not the staffing issue so much as it is the time. There's a lot of downtime. And so when you're using volunteers, they want to feel like they're contributing towards what's going on in the community. And so some of the things that we asked for was maybe to reduce the hours. We did and do have enough volunteers that are willing to do the job. They're just, it's, it's a long time. There's also some issues with the noise in the mall. And so we have a couple of very nice volunteers that are willing to go to the farmer's markets, the street fairs and some of those places where they can just sit down and talk to people one-on-one, which is exactly what we were doing at the mall. Was that a good explanation, guys?
Great explanation.
So that's kind of what it is. It's not so much that we didn't have enough volunteers, it was that we wanted to utilize the volunteers to their full capacity and make it as rewarding for them as they possibly could. Because I will tell you that we have lots of people that are willing to be volunteers for the city and, you know, they want to do worthwhile things.
Understood. So when, when would you contemplate the shutting down of that?
It was the, I think the, the time runs up at the end of October. We were already going to be down in November and December because the mall utilizes that space. And then we, if we were going to continue on, we were going to continue on, I believe, in February through October.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No?
We still have a huge pool of volunteers available.
So you're, you would take your show on the road, so to speak?
Yes, sir. Yes, absolutely.
Get out there to events like we had just this past weekend, the Rotary Street Fair and...
I alarmed my children. I bought a tablet the other day.
Oh. You're dangerous now.
Yes, that's exactly right. But that's, that's the wave of the future. And they expect to see us. If they want an answer, they want it. We need to go where they are and do that.
Very true. Thank you, sir.
Yes, exactly. Well, I'm an Android guy, so never mind.
Mr. Mr. Loomis, we have here, among the recommendations, as you already mentioned, increase participation in Ventura County Citizens, Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee. Can you elaborate on that? How, how do you see, how do you increase participation? Okay, for Sherri Phoenix then.
Thank you. Hi. We currently have one active member and due to medical reasons, he is stepping down. So whereas we could have two regular members and one alternate, right now we have zero. And obviously, having full membership in VTAC, you know, our two regular members and an alternate going to these meetings, when the time comes for allocation of funding for various projects, transit, you know, curb cuts and roadway projects, traffic projects for the various cities, they all examine the different projects and then they vote. And if we don't have representation, we're less likely to get our city's projects funded.
Thank you. The reason I brought it up, because Councilmember Price and I are scheduled to actually start interviewing for at least one position. So I forget how many there, there are. But that's definitely something we will have to discuss then, probably with Francine as well.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Or Mr. Hauser. Yes, Mr. Hauser.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? None? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Then I am looking for a vote to approve the recommendations as outlined by staff one and two. We do have one statement card by Michael O'Connor and it doesn't say what it is about other than this particular item. All right. That's for the record. All right. Mr. Adam.
Yes. Again, thank you so much for all that you do. And I love the way you break it up into teams. I think that's good. With team leaders, it's a way to get stuff done. I like that. Anyway, yeah, I'd like to move that we recommend, that we receive the Council on Aging Report and, and also approve the recommendations in that report.
Recommendations one and two?
One and two.
Great.
Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for being so patient. Have a nice evening. We will move to item thirteen, follow-up items by City Manager, Mr. Mittnick.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up items. The next city council meeting will be two weeks from tonight on November 5th. At this point in time, three public hearings are scheduled. The first has to do with a municipal code amendment to comply with the new 2013 California State Building Code requirements. And the second public hearing has to do with a property that the area housing authority of the County of Ventura owns on Los Feliz Drive. It's for Phase Two and it has to do with the bonds that they have. We have, they have to comply with the tax exempt, taxes exempt financing Recovery Act requirements. It's more of a technicality. The third public hearing is the Local Campaign Finance Ordinance update that City Council weighed in on and approved to move forward at the last council meeting. And then we have one department report, has to do with long-term planning, sort of like what you heard tonight with the Senior Master Plan. This has to do with our water and wastewater, it's a 50-year asset management and financial plan. That's it. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mittnick. And now our City Attorney, Tracy Noonan, has several announcements.
Yes, several closed session matters tonight. First one is conference with legal counsel existing litigation, she Engineering and Construction versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number BC 492100, LA Superior Court pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. Second is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9C. Third item is public employee evaluation, City Attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. Fourth matter is public employee performance evaluation for the City Manager pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. And the final closed session matter is conference with labor negotiators, city designated representatives, Mayor Claudia Bildel Peña and Human Resources Director Gary Rogers for unrepresented employees, City Manager and City Attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. It is unlikely I will have anything to report.
Thank you very much. And this concludes our city council meeting at 8:27. Mr. Adam?
Just one quick comment. I would like to wish a happy 83rd birthday to my mother, Carol Adam. Mom, if you're watching, don't forget, age is a question of mind over matter. If you don't mind, it doesn't matter. And I know it doesn't matter because she just spent the day at Not Scary Farm. Yes, 83. Anyway, happy birthday, Mom.
Very impressive. All right. This concludes our city council meeting and this is, we are adjourned until November 5th. Have a nice evening.